And good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the January twenty-third meeting of the governing body to order. Madam Clerk, would you take role?
Mayor Collins.
Present.
Mr. Cook.
Here.
Mr. Escobell.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Labor. Dr. Rennie.
Present.
Mr. Royble.
Present.
Mr. Seagre.
Present.
Mr. White.
Present.
And Dr. Aldridge.
Present.
All members are present, Mayor. We do that with more.
Wonderful. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the House of Representatives. And to the power which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is number four, consent agenda. All items listed with the designation of CA are are considered to be routine items by the governing body and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a member of the governing body so requests, and support by two other members is received. Any item removed from the consent agenda will be considered in its normal sequence on the agenda.
All right, just I would like to make one quick announcement. Number eighteen on our agenda today is a a resolution expressing support to name a a piece of roadway, the USS Cheyenne naval submarine. And we had it said here to go to the Finance Committee. Actually, that needs to go to the Public Services Committee. So y'all will note that number eighteen will be going to the Public Services Committee and not Finance. And now at this time, I'd ask, is there any item that is on the consent agenda that a member of this governing body would like to remove?
Mr. Mayor.
Sir.
Twenty-two A.
Concur.
Concur.
All right, twenty-two A has been removed from the consent agenda. Anything else from the governing body? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Is that you, Mr. Escobell and Mr. White? Thank you. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The consent agenda is approved with item number twenty-two A removed from the agenda.
Next item is number six, ordinance on third reading, amending ordinance number four-four-five-five, defining the terms and conditions of employment for sworn officers of the Cheyenne Police Department for fiscal year twenty-two to twenty-three by updating the department's pay plan schedule as specified in Exhibit B, relevant to cost of living adjustments for city employees.
All right, so state law says we've got to do this annually, and this year we have one change, and that is to our cost of living allowance. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to our terms of employment conditions for our Cheyenne Police Department? All right. Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve on third and final reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Escobell. At this time, any comments or questions from members of the governing body? All right, hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Dr. Aldridge.
Yes.
Mayor Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Cook.
Yes.
Mr. Escobell.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Mr. Labor.
Aye.
Dr. Rennie.
Yes.
Mr. Royble.
Aye.
Mr. Seagrave.
Yes.
And Mr. White.
Yes.
All right, this ordinance is approved on third and final reading.
Next item is number seven, ordinance on second reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located southwest of the intersection of Ridge Road and Holland Court.
All right, so how many folks are here to talk about this today? Okay, wonderful. So typically, when we have a big house like this, we'll maybe limit conversation to, you know, a minute or two. So if folks want to come up, and if you could just keep your comments concise, I'd appreciate it. We have heard you guys a few times, and we're happy that you're here again today. So please come forward and speak to us about the annexation. This is an annexation that was requested by the owners of the property. And, Mr. Moon, did you want to speak? Please.
Mayor, members of council, Charles Bloom, planning and development director. Just want to note that for the audience, mostly this is two items. We have an annexation ordinance in front of us, which annexes the property, and the second one is a zoning ordinance, which would establish a zone district for the property. There has been a petition that has been circulated throughout the community in that area, and is presently under review by the City Clerk's Office to verify the signatures. The early review of the petition does indicate that it looks like about twenty-nine percent of the residents within a hundred and forty feet and abutting, the property excluding right-of-way have signed, which would trigger the supermajority vote, or eight positive votes for votes for approval of the related zoning item. And that would occur on third and final reading, which would be in, I believe, it's three weeks because we have a fifth week this this month. In addition, there's another provision that's located in the city municipal code, which is the Unified Development Code, which just states that in the event twenty percent of landowners within twenty percent of the area sign a petition, then that would trigger a supermajority vote as well, and it appears around fifty-seven percent have signed that. As this item moves forward, we will provide a map that shows the area and the individuals that have protested. Again, we have to finalize that prior to third and final reading with the Clerk's Office. So again, just a note mostly for the audience here, the supermajority vote, that would be something that would be triggered for the next item, which is the zoning. This item is the ordinance for the annexation. I did want to note one more thing about the annexation, since it's closely related to the other one. It is possible to annex property without a zone. It is highly not recommended to annex property without a zone district because in the absence of a zone district, there would be problems with enforcement of any type of land use or even development of that land in the area. So in the event that, on the next item, a zone district of lesser intensity, so something below the NR three, is proposed through either an amendment or substitute ordinance, that would be better than annexing it with no zone.
Thank you, Mr. Bloom.
You're welcome.
Anyone in the audience, why don't you come on up, and we have two microphones here. Do me a favor, pull that microphone right up to your mouth so we can hear you in the audience, and also for the people on TV, okay? Introduce yourself, sir.
My name's John Cecil. I live at thirty-two seventeen Smith Place. And so I'm going to try to keep these comments towards the annexation, but the first part I want to talk about, I think, probably applies to both. My understanding that they were supposed to notify all the property owners within a hundred and fifty feet by certified mail. I got notified. I am adjacent to it. They did not come certified at all.
Sir, you're mistaken on that. The law says that an annexation, the people in the area of the annexation are going to be notified by certified mail, and the state law defines that as the people within the area being annexed. But you got a zoning notification that says you were going to be annexed, or there's an annexation, a zone change, and probably a land use change around you, and that goes to people three hundred feet from that property.
Okay.
Okay?
And the people right across the street from me said they did not get a letter at all. And so I don't know, and I don't know who all did.
Yeah.
And so anyway, and I'm not against development and against progress in the city, and I thought that this property would probably be developed and have single-family housing in there, just like all the rest of the surrounding area. And so I think if it's going to be developed, it has to be developed right, and it has to have a plan. But the answers I keep getting to my question, like drainage and the ten to fifteen feet of builder that they're going to put behind my house, they say they don't have a plan. When I talked to Board of Public Utilities, they said, yes, they've approved it. If they, you know, they can annex it, that they can hook it up, but they have no plan to develop, to approve, that shows what's going to, that's going to consist of depending on the scope of their project, that they're going to have to do all kinds of flow tests and modeling and that kind of stuff. And so until they, you know, know what's going to have to be done, I think that needs to kind of be looked at too before it can be be annexed and brought in.
Mr. Cecil, just so I can answer that question for you, because I've done this for a long time, and when I talk to developers, what they say is, that's really expensive. And if you're not sure you're going to get the project to move forward, you can't spend the dollars. And so you got to get it, you got to get it annexed and zoned, and then you know you can do a project, then you spend the money on on how you're going to get it done.
Okay.
Not to make excuses, because I understand exactly what you're saying, but, you know, to spend a lot of money not knowing you can get the project forward is tough. So they tend to get annexed, zoned, and then they know they can do it, then they spend the money on the engineering to to be able to make that project work.
Okay.
Just what my twelve years of sitting on the planet of the Public Service Committee and asking those same questions, that's the answers I used to get.
Okay. All right. And I guess I'm wrong on the other. I thought that we read that, and that was part of the six conditions or whatever, and
And actually, sir, it is fifteen-one-four-oh-two talks about it has to be sent to the people in the area. But earlier in the in the thing, it defines the areas of people within the area being annexed.
Okay.
And then we send, like, seven days later, we send a letter out to everybody within three hundred feet to tell them that there's a zone change in annexation and a change of the land use moving forward. And so you're you're part of that group that got that three hundred-foot letter.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cecil. Good evening, ma'am. Bring that microphone right up there.
Thank you, Escamia, thirty-two thirty-one Smith Place.
Thank you. I heard your first name. I didn't hear your last name.
Escamia.
Escamia, thank you.
And regarding these letters, these certified letters, I never received a certified letter at all.
Do you live in the area being annexed?
Right at the corner of Smith and Holland.
Yes, ma'am, and you're not in the area being annexed. You're adjacent to it. You're next to it.
That's right behind me.
Yes, ma'am, but you're not in the area being annexed. Only the people in the area, the ten acres that are being annexed, get the certified letter. The people outside of it do not get a certified letter.
I guess I don't understand that.
So let me let me go through it again. The state law says that the utilities and the people who own the land that are actually being annexed get a certified letter. Everybody around that area gets a letter from the city if you're within three hundred feet. Let's say we have a zone change coming, but that's done by first-class mail.
Okay. I didn't get a zone change letter either, so.
And where do you where do you live, ma'am?
The corner of Smith and Holland.
Okay.
That ten acres is right behind my back.
Yep, you're within three hundred feet for sure.
I never got a, I only got it from a letter regarding the planning commission meeting, I mean, the AVI meeting.
And yes, yes, ma'am, and that's the letter that you would have gotten from AVI as the agent for the area. No, ma'am, they're not. Their first-class letters had come from Brad Emmons from AVI, and it would say, we want to let you know that there's a zone change, an annexation, and a change of the land use that is going to happen within within your area, and here's how you can get ahold of the information. Yes, ma'am. Who's next? Could you turn that one off for us there, please? No, we got it. You stay right there. Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Renee Fowler.
Renee Fowler?
Yeah, I'm in the hospitality industry. I work for a lot of the different restaurants, hotels in town. I'm sure a lot of you have seen me over Little America, et cetera, et cetera. And so I'm just speaking on behalf of what I believe in this town that we need for the economy, for our people, for the businesses. I believe it's going to bring in a better workforce for us. You see, and indeed, all the time, how many people are looking, you know, their jobs, excuse me, I'm nervous, I haven't spoken. So you see how many jobs and the community who's looking for people to work. Most of the people, they come to town, they'll eat here, they'll work here, and then they go back out to Fort Collins because they don't have a project like this, a place like this, where it's all-inclusive. They have the pool, they have the gym, and they can have a little community center. That workforce that goes back to Fort Collins can be here, and I believe it's a good, a good plan and well-thought-out and a good project, and that's just my opinion. But also, I hear everything when I'm in the hospitality industry. I hear the people coming in. I hear the people coming, you know, for their banquets and their dinners, but they're going back to Fort Collins. So I do touch a lot of people's lives here in Cheyenne, and I do appreciate this town.
Thank you, ma'am. Who else is next? You're going to push that button and get that green light to come on, okay? There you go. Please identify yourself.
My name is Sharon Tuggle. I live on Holland, and I'm really opposed to this annexation and rezoning. It's going to bring in more crime. It's going to bring in more traffic. It's going to bring in more problems for our neighborhood. We've got a nice, quiet neighborhood, and we want to keep it that way. We don't like the idea of a country club, or not a country club, but a community center with a club, I mean, with a pool and all that stuff. It's just going to bring more problems to the neighborhood.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Who's going to follow Mrs. Tuggle? Let's not be shy. There you go. So do me a favor and pull that microphone up so it's right.
Good evening.
There you go.
My name's Elizabeth Staple. I live at thirty-three oh-five Thomas Road, and I have some concerns. You have two hundred and seven units going to be going up. You have a dirt road on the side. I really am concerned that you're going to get all those cars parked in there. You have two hundred and seven units, and a lot of people have a couple of cars. They don't have one car. They have a couple of cars. And we're going to have families, they're going to move in there. And I don't know how many cars the families are going to have. They could have three cars. But I'm really concerned about that. And if you look at the apartments that are built along, or the small high-density residences you have on Ridge Road, you have cars parked along the street. And I've been told there will be no cars parked along the street. But I'm not sure that's exactly what's going to happen because people are going to park wherever they have a place to park. If they have three cars, they're going to park their cars. So I have concern about that. On good authority, I understand that there's drainage issues in Thomas Heights. So you're now going to build right across from Thomas Heights. So that's an interesting proposition. And there's a nice slope on the property where you're going to build, and that's a concern also because you have houses built on the slope, right, adjacent to the property. So that's a concern. And somewhere around twenty feet, it's a slope. It's a nice slope. So I am concerned about the slope. See, now we've got traffic, and we've got two entrance ways. And we have, I don't see a huge street where you're entering. So that's a concern. Where are all the cars going to be parked? That's a concern. The drainage is a concern. So I spoke to the gentleman who have a plan, and some of their drainage consists of pools of water. And so those pools of water are going to have to be drained out, or you're going to have mosquitoes. That's real obvious. So that's a concern. And we can always spray, but I'm not really in favor of insecticide. So there are some concerns there, and I know that other people have some. There's been a traffic study, and that was approved. But I just, I'm not sure you're going to get all those cars in there.
Miss Staples, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Although I will tell you, the kids in the neighborhood, we're going to love that hill when it snows. Just telling you.
Well, yes, sir.
I'm just teasing.
I hope that the houses adjacent are not affected by construction.
We understand. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Who else would like to speak? Please come forward. We're talking about annexation now. Yes, ma'am. Nobody else? Okay, I'm going to turn off the public comment and ask Mr. Cook for a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Okay, it's been moved, seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Time for your comments from members of the governing body. Anybody? On annexation.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escobell.
Just to you and for the record, enlarging the annexation area, there's only one residence in that area.
Inside the area being annexed? That's correct. Anybody else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
One of the, one of the council's goals this past year has been annexing pockets. And this clearly is a pocket. It's surrounded, if not a hundred percent, close to a hundred percent. How it ends up being zoned is a whole nother issue, but as far as the annexation issue, this makes a lot of sense to me that however it ends up being developed, I believe it should be in the city versus a county-type setting. So I'm in favor of the annexation. Thank you.
Just for members of the audience who might not understand, a year ago, we do our council goal-setting, and one of the goals that we had is we have sixty-five properties in the city where they're, they're a hundred percent surrounded by the city county pockets. And so we made it a goal to clean those up. When you talk to Deborah Lee, who's our county clerk, it's a real struggle for her to be able to do zoning precincts, or assuming voting precincts. We have jurisdictional problems with, is it the sheriff or the police, which fire department responds? And we're concerned about, you know, the health and safety of the people who live in those areas. And so it has been a goal of ours, and we're annexing right now the first five of the sixty-five properties. And so at some point in the next year, it is our goal to annex all of those, and the area that you're talking about is one of those sixty-five properties. So it is a council goal to annex them. Now, I think the question we all have is, how do we use that annexed area, right? And so that's what we'll be working on in the future. But just to let you understand what Mr. Seagrave was referring to and why why he made that comment. Anybody else? Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, through you. Having grown up here in Cheyenne and having driven past, I used to live in what's now Ward Two and on the north side of town, and having driven past that property multiple times, I've just seen it deteriorate over the last probably twenty years. And I think that happens when some of our residents become more elderly and aren't able to care for the property, and it's a big property, over ten acres. And I have had an opportunity to visit with a lot of the residents from that area over the last two weeks, and hear concerns, whether it was going out to lunch with a friend who lives in that neighborhood, or having you show up at council and coffee. I also am assured with some of you that I will be voting for annexation tonight. I think that the increased sidewalks, the gutter, the street, some of the things that will be done to that neighborhood will improve that property and your property values. So for that reason, I'll be voting for annexation tonight, and I agree and echo what the mayor said is then the question becomes, what what should go in that property once it's cleared out? And I think that's where really the discussion lies. So, thank you.
All right, anyone else in the council? Are we ready to vote? All right, the motion is to annex. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, the ordinance is approved on second reading, and we will have third reading in three weeks to finalize that decision.
Next item is number eight, ordinance on second reading, amending the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from county A-one agricultural and rural residential to NR-three neighborhood residential, high-density for land located southwest of the intersection of Ridge Road and Holland Court.
All right, just again, for the record, we did receive your petition today, and once our clerk has a chance to go through and certify that, if in fact you have met the statutory criteria, it will take a supermajority at our next meeting to pass that, which would be eight positive votes of the council to change the voting or the zoning to the proposed NR-three. And with that, I would open it up to the the audience to talk about the zone, which is to change it from agricultural A-one and rural residential to an NR-three neighborhood residential high-density for the area, the ten acres that we've been discussing. Anybody want to come and speak to that? Mr. Cecil.
Once again, my name's John Cecil, and I live at thirty-two seventeen Smith Place, and I just have several concerns about this whole property, and I think it needs to be done right. The whole area, basically, that surrounds this area, besides a little new apartment that went over on a corner and one strip of land that is is right up against Thomas that hasn't been developed, I'm assuming will be single-family houses. But if you look, the whole neighborhood and the whole surrounding area, basically, is single-family homes. I've lived in my home for twenty-four years, thereabouts. And when we bought there, you know, we, that's what we bought, was in a single-family home neighborhood, and I think a lot of other people did, including the new subdivisions along in Thomas Heights and some of those other areas. One of my biggest concerns is the drainage behind my house. The way that land slopes, it slopes right into my house on the backside. My understanding, their plan, they want to try to drain it all out towards Del Range. To be able to do that, I'm not sure how they're going to do that, and when I keep asking, they say they don't have a plan, which I understand, it costs money to do that, but you've got to have some kind of a plan to get it there because it's going to affect the neighbors if they don't do something, and and that's why we're here, is because we're concerned, but.
And Mr. Cecil, if I could speak to that real quick, because I think that's all of our concern. You know, when I became mayor, we inherited the Thomas Heights situation, and you know, what I don't want to do is have a repeat of that, right?
Right.
So our city engineer is sitting right here, and we have a couple of consultants that we have that are hydrologists on staff, and we're going to look at whatever plan comes forward to make sure there's no question we don't have a repeat of that. So just because they bring a plan, we are going to review that and make sure that there's no question that we don't have a repeat, that it at least makes it as good or better than it is today, and that there's no additional damage. Just for the people in the audience, that's something that none of us want to repeat of what happened in the past, and we will make sure, regardless of what happens, that the drainage is looked at, and Mr. Cobb will make sure that it's it's protected. Please continue. I apologize.
And so, yeah, I mean, I invite y'all to kind of look at that, and I just, I've looked at it, I don't know how many times now, and I don't know how they can ever get that in it, you know, if they're going to put retaining walls, if they're just going to pile dirt up back there, I don't know. But other concerns there. You know, just the immense density of what they're trying to put on there, and the amount of apartments. I mean, two hundred and seven new households on ten acres of land with one inlet and outlet on Ridge and another one on Thomas, the traffic, if that's going to, that's going to increase. You know, the parking, we've talked about that. They said they're going to have one and a half parking spaces per apartment. That's not going to work now. I mean, in Wyoming, people don't, I mean, everybody has a car, at least one car usually, and you get a three-bedroom apartment, they're going to have more than one and a half cars. Even a two-bedroom apartment, they're probably going to have more than one and a half cars, and so they're going to be spilling out in it in the whole neighborhood. But I understand that it's about economics, and the most, they want to get the most money they can out of that property, and the most way to get most money out of that property is to rent it. I mean, you can bring in, I don't know, half million dollars a month in rent. It's probably better than trying to sell single-family homes in that area. And I just wish it wasn't all about economics, but, you know, that's what it seems like, what it is to me.
So, Mr. Cecil, we're going to have to ask you to wrap it up, okay?
Okay.
We've been through four minutes here. Thank you.
The property values are something that we're really concerned with, of what it will do. They said at the last meeting that it was, they had studies that showed that it would increase our property values. I disagree with that, and I could probably find ones. The pipeline safety, I think that needs to also be addressed. School capacity is another reason. That whole east side is is clear full over there. And the noise and the end of traffic, like I've talked about, and I'll leave it up to other people.
She's, I appreciate it. You brought a comment up that I think is a concern of all of us, and that is the schools. And, you know, until you're overcapacity, they won't build another school. And so what comes first, right? And so unfortunately, in Wyoming, we have to build the homes before the school or the state will will address the school situation. That's really a sad situation for us.
Yep.
Thank you. Appreciate that very much. Who's next? Ma'am, you want to talk about zoning, did you not? There you go. You've been waiting to talk to me all night long. Please identify yourself for the record, and bring that microphone up just a little bit. You're kind of tall. There you go.
My name is Rebecca Merchi, and I live at thirty-two twenty-two Thomas Road.
And I'm sorry, Rebecca, I didn't get your last name.
Merchi.
Merchi, okay.
Yeah, it's a, it's an unusual one.
I got it.
And actually, I'm reading a letter from one of my neighbors first. They were not able to come because they don't drive at night anymore.
Okay.
They say, Dear City of Cheyenne Council members, please allow me to address the issue of the please allow me to address the issue of the proposed rezoning, which would allow multi-story apartment buildings at fifty-eight oh eight Ridge Road. We live close by in the neighborhood, which would be impacted by this project in adverse and irreparable ways. We moved here twenty-seven years ago after many years and numerous moves in a long USA, US Air Force career, because Cheyenne and this neighborhood in particular were where we wanted to spend the rest of our lives. Many of our neighbors are retired and feel the same way. And this is one of the most stable neighborhoods we have ever lived in. This proposed rezoning would change that. In addition, there are valid safety concerns. Thomas Road is on a nearly blind hill and crossing it to get our mail has resulted in some close calls with speeding cars. This project would certainly increase the amount of this dangerous traffic tremendously. It is also very likely to adversely affect the drainage in our neighborhood. Furthermore, the major interstate natural gas pipeline along the west side of the property is a significant safety issue. Many people bought their homes here with a reasonable expectation of spending the rest of their days in this place. The rezoning of foreign apartment building here would dash those hopes and damage trust in the government of our city. I'm sure some projects like this are a good idea to address housing concerns, but this is not a good idea for this location. We urge you please not to rezone this land. Doctor and Richard, Mrs. Richard R. Balzer. And then speaking for myself, you know, you've heard over the past several meetings, the, the concerns that we have. And most of it are as far as, as the rezoning of NR three. The high density designation and its negative impact on the safety, public health and welfare of the current neighborhood. And looking at safety, I actually met with one of our police officers over the weekend at the coffee with council meeting. And he was able to pull up some data for me to keep things simple. And he might want to correct me if I get this wrong. He compared the number of, of police phone calls for every reason over the past year between a similar high density apartment complex and the corresponding area at up in Crest Ridge. And what he saw that there were forty calls from the Crest Ridge area. And there were four hundred calls from the high density apartment area. Did I get that right? Sorry. And to me, this is definitely a cause for concern. And one of my neighbors used the term vulnerable, that he felt very vulnerable with the prospect of this development coming in. And you know, quite honestly, I share that feeling. And also it's been mentioned in the original intent, what I've been told about the original intent of NR three housing was to build high density residential apartments in the areas of high density business. So that the businesses could benefit from residents being able to walk to those businesses and take part in whatever they offered. If that is the case, if that was the original intent of NR three zoning, then I don't see where the property on Ridge Road fits that. Cause there's nothing within walking distance of that particular property. There's King Supers, which is a mile away. But if you've ever hiked up that Ridge Road hill and especially in winter, it's not something I can see people doing on a routine basis.
I've not walked it, but I rode my bike and that's a tough one. You're right.
It is. And then lastly, it is my understanding that the cost that, that the developer has invested in the property is what is driving the request for NR three zoning versus single family homes. Development should not be driven by land cost and profit margins. Development should be driven by the develop, the benefit to the community. And that community would be the local neighbors, which are all single family homes. And thank you. And sorry for shaking my way through that.
You did just fine. Thank you so much. Ms. Tuggle, did you want to talk to us? Ah, come on up.
Okay, I'm back again.
Say your name again, just for the record.
Sharon Tuggle.
Thank you, ma'am.
I live on Holland.
Yes, ma'am.
Just right, almost where the, the dirt road begins to Ridge Road, almost right in there. And I'm really concerned about the traffic, about the safety, about the schools, about the drainage and everything else that's been mentioned around here. And I'd like to know, I'd like to ask a question if I could.
I'm not sure I can get you an answer, but you can sure ask your question.
Okay. Why is it not possible, the lady that was talking about the economy and getting more people in here, blah, blah, blah. Okay. What's wrong with the apartments that they're building over on Converse?
You know, ma'am, the answer to your question is the ones over on Converse, I believe are, uh, are low debt or low, uh, they're income restricted apartments. And the number I've heard is we're five thousand housing units short by the end of twenty twenty-three. We need five thousand more multifamily housing units to meet our current demand.
What does that mean?
Means that if we don't build any more apartments, we'll be five thousand more families needing, looking for a place to live. So the, the housing study I've seen is that between today and the end of, or in January first of twenty thirty, we need five thousand more housing units built in Cheyenne to, just to meet our current demand for, for housing. And so that means that there's probably going to have to be houses built all over the place. Now, what those houses look like, that's the question you and I have to talk about.
Exactly.
Understood.
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I'm talking about. It should not be high density at all. It should be single family residences so that we don't have the overcrowding of schools, overcrowding of the streets and the safety issues and what have you. It's, we get enough of that around there. We don't need any more added to us. So I don't know what the, what the solution is here other than to not rezone it as high density.
I think you've been very clear about that, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Tuggle.
Thank you.
Bye. Good evening.
Kristi Barrowman and Smith Place.
Did you say Barrowman?
Barrowman.
Yes, ma'am.
And I live right across the street from the people that this is going to be in their backyard. And I do appreciate you guys doing the traffic light at Ridge and Story because I can finally get out of my neighborhood in the morning. I couldn't get out of my neighborhood to go to work because the traffic was spaced with those four-way stops. And this is a huge concern of mine because right now you add another four hundred cars to that area. I for sure won't be able to get out to go to work because it's so hard with that school there. So that's, that's my question and how, I know they said they did the traffic study, but I can almost one hundred percent guarantee you it wasn't between seven forty-five and eight fifteen in the morning or after three in the afternoon until four. So.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Ma'am, did you want to come up? Please identify yourself for us.
Good evening. I'm Jeanette Wallace. I live at thirty-seven sixteen Blue Feather Trail. And I'm here because over the last couple of weeks, I have been listening to a lot of negative and not always factual comments regarding this developer and this project. And I feel it's very important to put, to let you guys know what he has brought to this community. Jason Stevens is not a big city developer. He is originally from Laramie, graduated from the University of Wyoming. In two thousand and one, he created Gateway Construction. He has been a resident of Cheyenne most of his life. He has children that he graduated high school here. Over the course of many, of more than two decades, Mr. Stevens has grown Gateway Construction from a general contracting company into a full-service residential commercial construction company with a staff of thirty-two employees. With an exception of one employee, they all live in Cheyenne. These employees dine here, shop here, their kids go to school here. They have an invested interest in this also. As Southwest Wyoming's largest home builder, Mr. Stevens and his team have constructed more than five hundred projects throughout Laramie, Cheyenne and Northern Colorado. These portfolio of projects include hundreds of high quality, single family homes in local subdivisions, including The Point, Western Hills, Thomas Heights, Jordan pasture, Rocking Star, Saddle Ridge, Whitney Ranch, Sweetgrass and Whispering Hills. These hundreds of homes have greatly expanded Cheyenne's real estate market. Mr. Stevens and his team have completed many multifamily projects, which is what we're focused on tonight. These include the Yellowstone fourplexes on Yellowstone and Main Street, right by Davis Elementary. They include the Will's Village located just north of Lincoln Way, the Cheyenne Country West projects on South Greeley Highway, the Peak View fourplexes that are being constructed right now on Del Range and Geisel. Um, and the fourplexes that are coming in Sweet, the Sweetgrass area. The Yellowstone and the Geisel Del Range projects are two examples of how Mr. Stevens and his team have taken dilapidated homes that were eyesores and turned them into very beautiful, well-maintained properties. You can look at the Yellowstone project that is three or about three years old now and see how well-maintained it is still to this day. Combined, these multifamily projects, units have provided and will provide long-term housing for hundreds of families of Cheyenne while contributing to the visual appeal of the community. Mr. Stevens and the team take pride in the, in the, in giving back to the community. They support many charitable organizations like local sports teams, local high schools, the Unaccompanied Student Initiative and the Salvation Army. The company is also proud to be an active member of the Southeast Wyoming Builders Association, the National Association of Home Builders, the Greater Chamber of Commerce and Cheyenne leads. We are also going to build a sixteen thousand square foot property or new, sorry, new uh headquarters on Commerce Circle on the eastern edge of Cheyenne. It'll be a shop and headquarters combined. I was at a luncheon not, but a few months ago where you spoke, Mr. Mayor, and you emphasized the shortage of housing. And Mr. Stevens' team is trying to help with that shortage. On a personal note, my daughter and I moved here about three years ago. And the first few weeks that I moved to Cheyenne, I had to commute back and forth from Colorado every day because I could not find adequate housing. It appeared that we had a lot of affordable housing or lower income housing, but we didn't have the middle of the road housing. And that's what I was looking for in a nice, safe neighborhood, good housing that was well-maintained and taken care of. Eventually I did find a property in Saddle Ridge. I actually love the community enough that area that I ended up building with Gateway.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but you're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay. So this is in summary, Cheyenne does currently have a balance, does not currently have a balanced, sustainable future housing supply. But Mr. Stevens can help with this need. I would propose that as a community, we wholeheartedly support the locally owned and operated developer and the efforts to build high quality, attractive multifamily housing that contributes to the long-term happiness of residents and the Cheyenne community as a whole. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Wallace. Appreciate you. All right. Who's next? Evening, sir.
My name is Roger Alexander. I live at thirty-two twelve Holland Court, which is at the northwest corner of this property. Um, I'm going to address two criteria, zoning criteria. I apologize for those of you that were at the committee meeting and had, you're going to have to hear this again. Yep. Criteria two has to do with the compatibility with nearby properties. All the properties to the north, west, south and east are either zoned MR or A1. And all the developments in these four cardinal directions are single family homes. My house looks out over this prop, over the subject property. And all I can see is the field and the junk house and then the houses on Thomas. But I can't see that the apartments that are over on Story and Ridge. I don't think anybody in Crest Ridge can see those apartments because of the, just the way everything's designed.
Bring that microphone right up to you, would you?
Oh, yeah.
There you go. So people in the audience can hear us.
Yes.
There you go.
The properties in Crest Ridge subdivision are fairly large. My lot is eleven thousand square foot. That's almost a quarter of an acre and it's in the city limits. I'm going to assume that they're that the average lot size in Crest Ridge is nine thousand square feet, which is rough, which would work out to roughly five homes per acre. And assuming a resident count of four residents per house, that works out to twenty people per acre in the Crest Ridge subdivision. The development that's being proposed under this rezoning request would put two hundred and seven units on ten point seven acres. That works out to roughly nineteen units per acre, which is four times the existing density of housing in Crest Ridge. The units are, will run from one to three bedroom apartments. Assuming an average number of residents per unit of three would result in six hundred and twenty-one people on ten point seven acres. That works out to fifty-eight people per acre in this megaplex. And that's almost three times the density of people in Crest Ridge. I just don't believe that makes it compatible, uh, compatible with the Crest Ridge subdivision. The second one I want to address is criteria eight, public health, safety and welfare. Ramming six hundred and twenty-one people onto ten point seven acres adjacent to and abutting properties with one-third the number of residents will harm the public health, safety and welfare of the nearby properties due to increased noise pollution, light pollution, decreased property values, increased crime, increased crowding in the schools, potential drainage, drainage and runoff issues and an increased traffic. Traffic specifically has me concerned on Holland Court. There's two proposed entrances, exits to this project, one on Ridge, one on Holland Court. I would say on an average day, we get maybe thirty to forty cars on Holland Court. I've never sat out there and counted them, but I, I can't imagine it being too much more than that. This project would have parking for three hundred and eleven spaces. I'm going to assume that half of the vehicles are going to come out on Holland Court and half will come out on Ridge. Uh, so that's a hundred and fifty-five ve, new vehicles a day being introduced onto Holland Court. I'm also going to assume that half of those people are going to be going to Converse, Powderhouse or Yellowstone. And being, human nature being what it is, they are going to turn left or west on the Holland Court, come up the hill, down Holland Court to Canyon, turn right and on Story. If, if that's half the number of vehicles, that's going to be seventy-eight trips, new trips on Holland Court per day. Now let's assume that they all come back the same way. That's up to a hundred and fifty-six new vehicles. And on some days they might make three or four trips. You could potentially have over three hundred new cars traveling Holland Court, which is a very short residential street. So traffic and compatibility, I don't think this zoning request meets either one of those. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alexander. We're on the zone change.
Hey, Escamia again, thirty-two thirty-one Smith Place. Excuse me. Again, I have many of the same concerns as everybody else. Traffic, uh, noise, pollution, parking, drainage, all of that. And you know, I'm, I'm not against development in this, this community at all. And I know there, there is a need for housing. And like Mr. Alexander just said, you know, it does not fit into our, our community or the zoning guidelines. The thing that concerns me too is, you know, obviously they want to make a profit with their investment. But I want my investment to also stay, you know, viable. I, you know, I've put a lot of money into my home. I've been there for twenty-five plus years. I have good neighbors, I have wonderful neighbors. And the thing that concerns me also with renters, there's no longevity, there's no investment in our neighborhood whatsoever. And a lot of people who rent, I would say probably the majority of them rent for a short period in time until they are able to find a single family home where there is not an apartment complex. And that I think is, is pretty standard. I have, I have daughters that are renting right now and they, they do not want to live in a community or in a neighborhood where there's an apartment complex. They would prefer to be in single family homes. So I'm also concerned about the crime. I'm also concerned about the schools. And if this goes into our, our neighborhood, that decreases my property value. There's no way that it can't. I haven't found one person that would buy my house without, in my backyard, not one person. And if there's anybody here today that's. And if there's anybody here today that said they would, I'd like to know who it is. But, you know, you can't control renters. They, they have no investment in your neighborhood whatsoever. And with an increase of what Mr. Alexander said, six hundred and some people, it's just, it's crazy to put that on ten acres with all these vehicles. And I can guarantee you, there will be parking at the side of my house, in front of my house, because there's not gonna be enough parking. And traffic will be a, a major issue. So I sincerely hope that you folks will vote against this proposal.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Emmons.
I'm Mr. Mayor, City Council members Brad Emmons, AVI agent for the applicant Jason Stephen and Bedrock Development LLC and Gateway Construction. I'm just wanted to kind of go through our process of, of location and how we came about with this zoning and additional items that have been discussed. This, in Plan Cheyenne, this category, land use category is urban residential. The primary uses in urban residential are single-family residences, duplexes, patio homes, townhomes, condominiums, and apartments. Those are the list of primary uses within the, that land use category. It further states that multifamily residential should generally be served by collector and arterial streets and the future should have access to transit or transit centers. A Ridge Road is an arterial street in, in the neighborhood, and it has been designed and built to handle the, the traffic. And we have pulled in a, another desired characteristic in urban residential is a pattern with a, a development of traditional development patterns with a mix of densities, lot sizes, housing types, and home sizes that are all integrated with one another. And so this is one of the reasons we got down the path of, of multifamily and, and our three for this location. We have completed a traffic study. It has shown that none of the turning movements decrease speed flow, a level service of D. I believe in the city engineer can talk about that as more as well, but we have done that.
How about from seven-thirty to eight-fifteen in the morning?
There is peak, there is peak flow, Mayor, through you to the council, there is peak flow characteristics in there. And again, I would defer to, I'm not a traffic engineer or a traffic engineer expert, but I would refer to the city engineer. I'm sure the council will have questions for him as we conclude here, so I don't know that we have to answer that now. I did, we did have an open house and Mr. Alexander brought up a question on Holland Court, and I just wanted to reply to that. I have spoken to the fire department and that can be a fire access only. So it doesn't have to be a full turning movement onto Holland Court. I don't know how that works with engineering and that kind of stuff, but we can continue to look at the Holland Court becoming a fire access only of the fire department only needs a full movement off of Ridge and they can use a gated fire access only off of Holland. So we are still working with the questions from the community and finding out answers as we move forward. There was discussions on the Suncor Pipeline. That was the first call we made when Mr. Stevens was looking at the property. They requested a thirty-foot easement be added to the plat for their, to be able to get to that parcel. They actually probably prefer a single use on the property because it gives them better access. They don't have fences crossing across it. They don't have to, and we, so we have provided that thirty-foot easement along that pipeline corridor and then have agreed to make sure that with the final grading of that, that it would be that they could drive along that corridor. So if they have to do any kind of work, they can still get to it. They didn't want a slope across it, that that made it hard for them to develop. Also with the urban residential, I did want to point out the UDC also calls that as NR3 as an applicable city zone for the urban residential land use category. I think that's, we've been discussed about, we've met with the city engineer and also the drainage consultants from the site before submitting any applications and have come up with a, a modified plan, I would say, that goes beyond what the normal drainage calculations are out here. That includes both detention and a retention area and water quality recharge. So we have started those discussions. I don't want it to be like we haven't had any discussions at all. So we've worked with them to kind of come up with those.
In Brad, you have four minutes, so if you could wrap it up.
I'll go ahead and turn it over to Jason and then I'll be here in case there's any other questions.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council, Jason Stephen, Bedrock Development, Gateway Construction. So just to be real quick, I just kind of wanted to point out that again, it's, it's the zoning, I guess, that's an issue here tonight. So there's really no way for us to have completely gone through the whole design process. In order for us to do that, it really needs to be into that zone. A lot of the concerns that are brought up about traffic and drainage and all of those things, all of those things will be dealt with. And we work with the city to do this all the time and successfully. So, so it's not that they're not a concern, and I understand that those, those items and those issues are a concern. But again, like, it's just so early in the process for us to be really focusing and honing in on those things. But we, we do know that traffic and sewer capacity and drainage and property values are all issues that everybody's concerned about, and we're willing to work on those issues. I have researched heavily. I have at least eight to nine different studies here, one by MIT, one by Harvard, indicating that mixed use and higher density mixed with lower-density residential does improve property values for the single-family homes. And I'm happy to share that with anybody else here at a later date if we would like to. I know there's been a little bit of compatibility issue with the residents and even with some of the members of council. And so one of the ideas that we've come up with to look at here is to limit the height of buildings within, say, a hundred and twenty feet of that west border, that west property line. So, you know, we're looking at some different designs to, to push a little bit taller buildings further to the east away from those so that they don't see those coming right out of their back door. And again, you know, Brad talked a little bit about traffic and, you know, our willingness to work with the fire department, the engineering department to really limit that traffic that comes out on Holland so that we don't impact those residents as much. We're not here to mess anybody up. We're here to, to really try to better as we've, have always had that as part of our goals at Gateway and at Bedrock to better our community that we live in. I mean, that is really what we focus on. It's not all about money, but in order for us to continue to exist, we have to turn a profit. And unfortunately, single families, just on that small of a parcel, single family is just not gonna make it. Ten-acre lot, trapped lot like that in the city where it's a, you know, a trapped area, it's just not big enough to do a single-family full-on residential development, put all that infrastructure in, pave Holland Court, fix all the drainage problems, and then only get a few lots out of it. It just won't work. So I could go on and on and on. I won't do that. But what I would like to ask is that tonight, that the council really consider passing this or voting yes for this? We have another, you know, a whole nother reading. We'd like an opportunity to sit down with the city again and maybe look at pushing those building elevations back a little bit, look at that traffic on, on Holland Court again. But in order for us to have that opportunity to do that, we'll have to have this at least move forward until the third reading. And I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has.
Appreciate you, sir.
I'll wait.
Sir, did you want to speak? Please. Bring, bring that microphone up there.
My name's Paul Ricketts. I actually reside on.
Can you say your name again, sir? I'm sorry.
Ricketts, R-I-C-K-E-T-T-S. I actually reside on, in Thomas Heights on Harvey Street, which is the street that is the proposed, one of the proposed entrances to this neighborhood. I just want to say that I'm not opposed to annexation, obviously. I'm not opposed to building in Cheyenne. And I agree that the builder has done some phenomenal projects, including in my own neighborhood. But I think for the purposes of how this is owned, his prior performance, I, I know he can build nice things. It's not really relevant in this particular case and how we decide or you decide how to zone this property. What I would like to point out is that there are plenty of opportunities and spaces, maybe not all readily available as this property might have been to go ahead and build these types of apartments elsewhere without infringing upon an existing neighborhood that's been there for decades and another dead neighborhood that's been around in the plans for about a decade. All full of single-family homes, none of it being zoned as high residential. And so it really doesn't fit with that vibe of that neighborhood. I understand all the concerns everyone has said, and I concur with those. You know, three-story apartments on this particular land doesn't fit anything else that you can see from that land, including right up to it. I don't know the economics to build single-family homes on that ten-acre parcel. I do know that there's a pretty small spot on south of Thomas Road from there that was built with just a few homes in an area that's similar to that. I don't know the economics of that, but I assume no one would have built those homes if it wasn't financially feasible. So I think that that's something to be considered. As far as traffic goes, maybe Ridge Road can handle that, but there's a lot of traffic within the neighborhoods as well, including in Thomas Heights. We already have an issue, people cutting from Ridge to College through Thomas Heights on Thompson or on Thomas Way. And there's been no resolution of that, even though it's been requested to be looked at. Putting that interest on Harvey, people are gonna cut now through Harvey Street as well. They can't turn left, can't turn right, but I can get between the cars and get down Harvey Street and then down around and back out. So I think that's an issue as well that there's no easy answer for, that will be made even worse if Holland Court is only a fire exit. And there is congestion in the neighborhood. Someone mentioned at the other meeting, you know, try going to King Supers. It's impossible, the parking, things like that. There's movement in this direction going in other areas of the city. And I think there's plenty of opportunity to build these types of residences and help meet the city's needs for housing without basically taking this major complex and dropping it in the middle of an existing neighborhood full of single-family homes. I would just urge that the land be zoned as consistent with what's immediately around it in all directions.
Thank you, Ms. Ricketts. Good evening.
Evening. Amber Reagan. I live at three, two-two-five Smith Place. I know that we've brought up so much about traffic, but the one thing that I want you guys to consider from what I heard this morning on the radio was that you're gonna be starting Dell Range, making that from Whitney Road in more accessible to everybody. And you're gonna divert traffic to Story, which is right there. And so I just kind of want to bring that up when you're thinking about rezoning that area. I know it'll still be in construction and all that, but you're gonna add how much more traffic to Story and then construction traffic, all that kind of stuff, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Hello, sir. Push that button till the light turns green. There you go. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name's Chris Romo. I live at thirty-one, twenty-nine Smith Place. And I'm, I'm going to echo many of the sentiments of our local neighborhood. I have a old plat. What I would like to see proposed is single-family homes, Grove Street, Smith Court, and another exit out south to Thomas to give three entrances into this property. And again, I'd urge to vote for a not high-density, but single-family homes in the area. And that's all I've got.
Thank you. Let's push that green button there for me. There you go.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Members of the Council. My name is Matthew Casper. That's Matthew with one T, Casper with a K. I live at forty-one hundred Rock Springs Street, apartment four B. I moved up here to Cheyenne from Estes Park, Colorado, back in July. I do have a green license plate. And I almost didn't move here.
Don't say that in front of our police officers, you know, when you move here, you gotta change that plate, brother.
They've already got my number.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And the people up here are wonderful, by the way. I almost didn't move here. I got a job offer and I almost didn't move because it was a challenge to find housing. I had lived in the Denver area for a little bit. I was looking for jobs in Fort Collins. I was enticed by the apartments that were down there that offered dog wash, dog park, gyms inside the facility and things like that. So I just want to start off by saying I am in favor of rezoning for NR3. I recently got my hands on a copy of a study that was done by the Denver School of Architecture and Planning. You guys might be familiar with Matthew Carney. He did an analysis. It was called Barriers to Accessible Housing in Cheyenne. And one of the things that he went over was the lack of different types of, of houses that were available and apartments being some of that. And what you see right now is a very big push for fourplexes in the rental area. And what people I don't think are understanding is the, the amount of jobs that are coming to Cheyenne. You, you addressed it briefly with the need for housing right now. We've got two thousand jobs coming with the Air Force Base expansion. You have Microsoft data centers that are going in. There are crypto mining companies that are coming to town. They're all coming up here and appealed by the state income tax. It's a big issue. It's a big driving force. The Front Range is getting built up. And if you go to Kurt Gowdy on the weekend, you see a lot of people from out of state. Those young professionals, much like myself, are seeking a different type of housing. I currently rent from Happy Homes Apartments, and although it's a nice little community and it's got a garage, I would love to have some of those amenities available. And the housing inventory up here simply does not support that at the moment. And I can understand a lot of people saying it's gonna bring in riffraff. The way that this building and this complex are being designed is that they have communal spaces. I've lived in apartments in Denver and along the Front Range that are very similar in style. And members of those communities are very involved. They clean up after themselves. They're engaged in the community. They're looking for a different sort of lifestyle that simply hasn't arrived yet. And the question I think we have is, do you want to provide that in order to appeal to those younger professionals? Or do we just want to nix it? And I hear a lot of people speaking out of fear of not knowing what's gonna happen. But I also know this is a very faith-based area, and I don't see a lot of people having faith in a developer that has done great things for the community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, and welcome. Get those plates changed. Who else? All right, last call for public hearing. Anybody else? All right, we'll close the public part of this meeting and I'll go to Mr. Cook for recommendation. Run number eight, sir.
Well, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve on second reading failed that Public Services Committee. Therefore, there is no recommendation. However, for the sake of discussion, I move to approve.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Royball. All right, Council. Comments? You have questions? What would you like?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a comment for the, the builder, if I, if I may.
Ask your question. I'll try to get you an answer.
Ask your question, and I'll try to get you an answer.
So I was uh. I was drawing on the drawing on the pictures. I, you know, um, I was only missing some crayons.
Why don't you bring that microphone down a little bit so that people.
I was only missing some crayons. Um, so anyway, um. I just had some questions just related to related to your if you would, sir. Related to some of the comments you made, then I had some I had some some additional questions, so. As you mentioned, um. The potential of working with the with the the uh city staff. On building elevations and and you mentioned, I I think you were talking really about the the western side. Um, maybe shorter building elevations on the western side, so. Uh, the the most adjacent part, at least to the western part of or the 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 far eastern part of the neighborhood, is that correct?
Western part.
Western part of the development.
The existing neighborhood, the eastern part, the western part of your.
Are you are you mayor? Yes.
So when you when you mentioned. Shorter uh building elevations. Um, are you talking, I mean. Are you talking less density? Are you talking taller buildings than on the on the eastern side of your development towards Ridge Road? How are you going to?
Mr. Stevens, you want to?
Um, so what we've we're looking at is um reducing for that hundred and twenty feet um down to two story. Building, and um if you remember some of the discussions earlier about that we did flat roofs, and part of that was for a reason. One of those was to keep the elevations down, so you don't have the peaks on the steep peaks on the roofs. And then maintaining the three stories as you get further to the east on the property.
Would that be a reduction in number of units?
It would end up reducing just because of the fact that you have the the lower. That you know, the lower.
Mr. Cook.
Instead of three story, two story.
Yes, I did have one more for him, Mr. Mayor, if you if she would allow. Thank you. Um, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'd that's uh. That's helpful information. And then you had mentioned that at at least for you, it didn't sound like single family homes would would pencil out, and I and I do understand that. But you know, as you as you and Mr. Emmons are are aware, as you're as you're aware, just on the on the south side of of. Thomas Road there. Um, was what are those about five? I they're less than ten years old. There are two. Two streets of of single family homes that have been built on a a much smaller area right there.
So when we looked at this for single family homes, there's a lot of infrastructure that has to be done in Holland Court. We also have to pave. The entire length of Holland Court. We need to bring sewer into. Uh, make sewer available and water available to those houses on the opposite side of Holland Court. As part of the requirements that the city has for developing that. We also have to improve some areas on along Ridge Road. Um, for that development. So those infrastructure costs that are required regardless of what we put there, single family, multifamily. Um, are very expensive. And the only way to make those pencil out is to get the density to be a little bit higher. The site also has challenges with grading. It has challenges with drainage. Um, so that we make the drainage work, we have to have larger ponds. Um, so I mean, we've basically spent the last two years working on this project, looking at all kinds of different options and and opportunities for it. Um, and this is kind of where everything ended up pointing to to make it pencil out and also be be a benefit to the community and be a benefit to Cheyenne.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins. Oh, first and foremost, um. I appreciate the uh good faith efforts on behalf of. Uh, AVI and the developer to meet with the residents of that area um this last week. And I appreciate that I really, for the most part, in talking with the residents of that area, have not heard. Uh, anyone say uh and refer to basically not in my backyard. Um, that the concerns tend to be around parking, drainage, hard surfaces, um safety, and I think that um. As a councilperson, I appreciate that those are the reasons that are being stated for the zoning concerns. Um, I also appreciate the developer thinking and trying to think outside the box with putting some. Varying elevations on the apartments. I just. I I guess I would like to see, and I've had constituents ask about, for instance, patio homes or um. How houses that have a much much smaller footprint, twin homes, other things that might be able, it it might be a better fit for that area. I just. I really struggle with the idea of putting that many people in that small of area in that location, knowing that we have an apartment complex. Uh, to the east of that, that we have um. Houses on five acre lots to the north of that. And knowing that Story Boulevard at some point will be widened and carried on through out to Whitney Road. Um, I just, right now, I I just don't understand and don't see how that would work well. So uh for that reason, I'll be a no vote on zoning this tonight.
Who else? Please, you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Seagrave.
Could we have some discussion on the traffic report and and what the city's perception of that is? And also what this Holland Court. Fire. Issue might.
Ms. Cop, could you discuss traffic studies in in this area?
Mayor, through through you to Councilman Seagrave. Sir, yes, we did review the traffic study, and as Mr. Emmons indicated. There was uh at final buildout, there was a level service D um on on story coming out of the subdivision. As far as Holland Court's concerned, um, we did have some discussions early on with the developer about restricting this access for fire only. Um, whether we actually move forward. We don't have any major concerns, but again, I don't want to put a hundred percent of the traffic out where we're at a level service D. Then we're going to be in much worse condition as we move in the future. So. But as long as we're, I think we still need to be able to use that access for some access out. Now, I did attend the public meeting that. Um, AVI did put on with the developer. I was invited and did attend. I did listen to the residents' concerns. And what I ascertained from that, basically on story is the intersection of Canyon and Story. So at that time, the the traffic study didn't look that much detail at this particular point, because again, we're at an annexation and zone change. So based on that, we have a preliminary traffic investigation. As we move forward in the process, I know that we will look in more detail. At these particular intersections um when we find out exactly what they're going to propose, because again, we're still in conceptual phases other than what we know and what the developers divulge to us. So. At this point, I was going to set a camera up at Canyon and Story and take a little closer look before we got to that point and see what options we can move forward with. Um, I'm looking at it now, and we have roughly six thousand cars a day on story, um about fifty eight hundred on Ridge in that location. Um, Thomas Road um is about six hundred, and we don't have any counts on Holland because, again, it's unimproved. So just to the east of that area, um, it looked like there was about five hundred to six hundred, like I said, on Canyon itself. Um, I hope that at least addressed some of your concerns or questions, if whatever you else you need, sir, I'll be happy to answer.
How about the fire access on Holland? I think Mr. Seagrave asked about uh uh restricting it to to a fire access. Any comments on that?
Mayor, through you, um, I I I at this point, I I hate to to really comment in too much detail about that, because again. My fear is of is putting all the traffic out on the story may cause us more of an issue than allowing it to distribute itself along two different routes. Um, but again, uh, we have a signal at at Story and Ridge, so we can mitigate some of this um in that direction for people getting on the story from that way. But I don't have it much detail at this point other than that. I'm sorry.
Other comments for members of the governing body?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Escabel.
Yeah, I struggled with the two exits, and now talking about having one be a fire exit. I was wondering if there was any attempt by the developer. To obtain the little triangle that's south of the subject property. To Thomas.
Thanks for jumping up, Mr. Stevens.
Through you. Um, so I've tried to make contact with that strip of land that is um. I guess to the south of ours, and I have not been successful in that. Um. That does block our access onto Thomas. So I know there's been a couple of comments about, oh, we'd like to see another road going onto Thomas, but I don't have control over that, because that's. Whoever that property, I don't remember his name now, but he hasn't, he hasn't communicated. I know Brad's made a few attempts to talk to him also, but that has.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments for members of the governing body? All right, the motion is uh to approve the annexation, or excuse me, the uh the zone change. Uh, we'll take a vote now. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye, no.
Can I see the hands of the noes? Dr. Aldridge is a no, Mr. Escabel is a no, Dr. Reni is a no, and Mr. uh Leiborn is a no. The ordinance does pass on second reading, and uh. We're on to the next item.
Next item is number nine, ordinance on second reading, annexing to the city of Cheyenne, Wyoming, land located east of Southwest Drive, north of I-80.
All right, we'll go to the, well, we'll give a minute here so we can. All right, well, uh, this is a owner requested annexation, a small piece of property. We'll go to the audience to see if there's anybody who wants to speak to the annexation from the audience. All right, hearing none. Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor. And I, and pardon me, I do have a frog in my throat or something this evening. Mr. Mayor, uh, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second. Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments for members of the governing body on the annexation? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The annexation ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number ten, ordinance on second reading, admitting the official zoning map of the city of Cheyenne, changing the zoning classification from County LI Light Industrial to LI Light. Industrial for land located east of Southwest Drive, north of I-80.
All right, state law says if you annex a piece of property, you have to zone it with the city's own, so we just annexed a piece of property on second reading. We have to zone it today. Anybody want to speak to the zone change to LI in the city versus LI in the county? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. Comments from members of the governing body on the zone change? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The zone change ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number eleven, ordinance on second reading, vacating West Nineteenth Street, west of Grand Avenue, city of Cheyenne, Laramie County, Wyoming. Located south of Old Happy Jack Road, west of Missile Drive.
This is a road that was, I guess, platted or whatever in eighteen ninety but never built. And so there's an effort here to vacate it. Is there anyone in the audience like to speak to that vacation? Hearing none, Mr. Cook.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Public Services Committee is to approve on second reading, and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave. Comments from members of the governing body on the vacation? Comments? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the roadway vacation ordinance is approved on second reading.
Next item is number twelve, resolution declining the Community Development Block Grant Block Grant, CDBG entitlement grant between the city of Cheyenne and U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. Supposedly from January ninth, twenty twenty three.
All right, so I know we've had a few folks here that we've seen before, and uh we welcome you again tonight, but again, uh. Because we've had you here two or three times, we could keep our comments brief. We'd appreciate that. And at this time, we'll go to the audience on the CDBG.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I do have um. Mr. Hoversland online, so just whenever you're ready for him.
Well, he said he was going to hear to answer any questions. Does he actually want to speak to us? Have him raise his hand if he does. Okay, bring him up. Scott, are you there?
Yep, I'm online.
All right, sir. Any comments for us?
Well, I just wanted to make sure that all of you received the email that I sent. Um, so. Um, I said that, and then it just to kind of clarify how that those allocations are made between. The state and the entitlements, and seventy percent of that. Of those monies go to the entitlements with the other thirty percent to the states, and then kind of a rundown of. WCDAs process, so I have that in in the memo, and if you have any questions on that, I'm here for those.
I appreciate the memo. Sorry to get a chance to read that, and we appreciate you being online tonight. Thank you. How about anybody else in the audience? Brenda, did you want to speak? Good evening, Dan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Dan Dorst, Executive Director for Habitat for Humanity of Laramie County.
That is a nice ring to it, sir.
Uh, thank you very much. I appreciate that. Uh, I'm still getting used to it. I would like to urge my concerns for declining the the entitlement status for a couple of reasons, but. First, before I get into that, let me say I understand the city's reasons behind it, the risks involved. Um, budgeting issues, things of that nature. I understand where you're coming from. But when you look at, as we've just heard tonight, the concerns of housing in our community and try to making them more affordable. Unfortunately, there's not a lot of tools in the tool belt. Right now, they're all federal programs, Lytec, Home, NCDBG, the National Housing Trust Fund. There's nothing on a local or state level right now that would replace losing the CDBG entitlement status of of Cheyenne. As a recipient of CDBG funds at our program, I can tell you, yes, they are onerous. Yes, they're paying. The SAM.gov requirement is a barrier to. Um, getting contractors to accept jobs where we have to pay from CDBG funds, but I will add. In the last year, we had four new contractors sign up to be in SAM.gov to help with our repairs program and receive CDBG funds. Um, so I understand the concerns of the city, but I think more time to decide and more time to think. Through what we would be losing as a community if we were not entitled on status would be wise for the city council to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Good evening, Brenda. He's tall.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the governing body, Brenda Burkle, Executive Director from my front door. Um, I too would be in favor of a little more time to um. Work through all the barriers and all the the onerous restrictions that are associated with the CDBG program. I will have to say that I'm incredibly grateful to Renee Smith, uh, who has been very, it's been, I think, a very. Uh, difficult um suggestion to remove the entitlement city status. She's been incredibly thorough about. Um, the reasons and helping us understand, and we do understand why. Um, I would just say that all of us nonprofits that receive the CDBG funding, it is a huge impact, and it's a huge impact, not to us. It is, but it's a huge impact to the people that we serve, the residents of this community, and the opportunities that may not otherwise be afforded to them. That being said, I would um also say that we understand that this program might need to be retooled. It might be to be reimagined if you keep it. Uh, and that I for one, and I'm sure I could call on my fellow nonprofits to to um offer the same, that we are here to be a part of that solution. But this funding is not available to us unless through you. We can't then go out and say, well, we'll just apply ourselves. That's not the way this little. This little program works, so it is only available as an entitlement city through you. Uh, and so we would offer our support in in. Um, retooling a program that really works uh and works on all levels.
Thanks, Ms. Burkle. Erin, did you want to speak? We we know exactly what you're going to say. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. I'm Julie Gleam, and I'm the Director of the Cheyenne Landlords Association. Our um nonprofits have been using CDBG for almost fifty years. Um, between nineteen seventy five and nineteen eighty four, we got over three point nine million dollars in CDBG grants. In nineteen eighty five to nineteen ninety four, we got four four million plus in CDBG grants. In nineteen ninety five to two thousand and four, we got six point two million dollars in CDBG grants. From two thousand and five to two thousand and fourteen, the city got four point five million in CDBG grants. We've had many, many nonprofits that benefit from the bill from these grants. Such as the Laramie County Senior Services, Needs Incorporated, Safe House, um, even the Community Rec Program. Um, Habitat for Humanity, the Camia Shelter, Family Promise, and many, many others. I have a whole book of all the agencies that have taken advantage of it. I'm not going to read all that. I have two big questions to the city, though. Where are you gonna replace money with? These grants, the needs for these grants don't go away just because you give away CDBG. The needs are there. Cheyenne has over a 99% occupancy rate in our rentals. The low income has a very tough time getting a rental because our occupancy rate is so high, and the competition for any rental at all is super duper high. Where are we gonna replace that type of money? My other thing is, has any one of you consulted with Casper? You know, Casper gave up the CDBG grant, and guess what? They want it back. What it did to them harmed them, and when they said, we want it back, CDBG wasn't there to say, oh, you can have it at 100%. They don't, aren't getting it back at the same level they had it before they gave up with it. I hate to see the city of Cheyenne make the same mistake that Casper made, and two years or a year from now, say, we really need the CDBG money. Please don't give up on it. Please do your homework first. Make sure you're consulting with Casper so that we don't face the same problems that Casper is currently facing now. Yes, they got their CDBG back, not at the same level they had it before they gave it up. And I'm really concerned that that's what Cheyenne's facing, and this will do absolutely nothing to help with our homeless problems in Cheyenne.
Julie, I have to tell you, I I spoke just in the last week with the city manager in Casper, and to my knowledge, they are not asking for it back. They're actually applying through the state of, uh, state of Wyoming through the WCDA um, for for their funds, and they're not, they're not looking to become an entitlement city again. They're done with that.
Well, and the other thing is, the timing on this is terrible. We're, we're losing E-RAP. We got a little bit of an extension on it from the feds, but it will be gone, and it probably will be gone by this summer. Another, that's just one more tool in all these nonprofits' back pocket to use so that they can help the the low income, um, pay for their housing, pay for the utilities, pay for stuff like that. And so the timing of this kind of is really good, just because we're also losing another program at the same time.
We appreciate you, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of the audience? Astrid Gannison.
Mr. Mayor.
Hey, no, no fireworks speeches now.
No, sir. Through you to the City Council, Steve Gannison here, 3704 Blue Sage Road. My wife told me last time I came up here, I didn't say what I was supposed to say. So I'm back to tell you a story. The story is simple and it's real. I'm gonna do the three Bs we do in church. Be quick, be brief, be seated. Is that okay?
Now, ladies and gentlemen, I have to tell you, I went to his ordination, it was damn near five hours. So what we're, we're everything since now on, I don't believe. No, Mr. Gannison, go ahead.
So, the story is, I was at work at the sanitation, and I was working in the back of the truck at the time, and I was making about $7.56. I got a phone call and it said, are you home? And I said, no, I'm at work. Get home quick. So I get home, I walk in my house, I smell this awful smell. BOPU was outside blowing uh, the line, and it stuck, and it went into three basements. My basement was the only one finished. So I come home and there's feces all through my whole basement. And so we called um, the Health Department, Gus said, you gotta get out of there. You can't stay. You have three kids that are all under the age of 10, and he goes, you can't stay here. Long story short, CDBG stepped in, because if my $7.56 and 6 cent wages was not gonna replace carpet, was not gonna do walls, was not gonna repaint, was not gonna even do my clothes. As a matter of fact, the insurance company came in and said, man, you just had a luck. I hope you know somebody, and I didn't, but I met a man and said, there's a program called the CDBGs Fund. And I applied, and they build my walls. They even realized that I was in a, me and my wife slept in the basement, and the window was so small that they said, you can't sleep here, so they put an egress in for us so we could exit if there was a fire. Thank God for the flood. You know, so um, I'm just saying that, that the CDBG fund has been real instrumental in helping a lot of people in this community, and I'm a recipient of it. And I'll be the first to say, I hate to see it go. It's a catch 22 for me because I understand the city's dilemma and I understand the community's dilemma. But being a nonprofit over the pool pit on Sunday, what do I tell people? Where do I tell them to go? What do I tell them to do? Needs can't help no more. Kamea can't help no more. And our pockets are not that deep, so I just wanted to let you know about that story, and and the CDBG fund did fund us. Now, it wasn't free. We had a mortgage on our house. Each year, we was forgiven. Um, I was moving, the director said, uh, you cannot take that money, you gotta pay it back. So when I sold my house, I paid the money back. Hey, anyway, thank you for that story.
Thank you, sir. Who else? All right, I hear none. We'll go to Mr. Royble for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, the motion to approve failed, therefore there's no recommendation from the Finance Committee. However, for the sake of uh, discussion, I move to adopt.
Seconded by Mr. Seagrave, comments from members of the governing body.
Sir.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins. Um, I just, I have had the opportunity to represent this council on the CDBG uh, since um, being elected to the council. And um, have had the opportunity to hear about the projects that have been done, to know the challenges that uh, a CDBG has faced. Um, and have an opportunity every single day to work with federal dollars um, in my day job. I know that there's been talk that we would be able to uh, walk away from this or notify um, HUD, and that anytime we wanted to come back, we would then be allowed to come back in and um, resume our relationship with HUD. Um, I'm, I don't know that it's that simplistic if we walk away. I don't know that we're at the point where we need to throw our hands up and walk away. I, I believe that um, what we originally thought um, and understood may not have been what the reality is, that we wouldn't be putting our nonprofits into a situation where they would be competing against all of the other nonprofits in the state. And for those WCDAs dollars, and we might or might not have any of our nonprofits that were awarded those funds. So um, I would ask that uh, my fellow council members to please consider that um, as we vote on this, and um, to recognize that we don't have the funds to replace those dollars that are being lost. We do have individuals that are, have their needs met through those nonprofit agencies, and um, that we take more time to consider this, whether that be through um, an additional postponement, whether that be by um, voting against this resolution, um, and coming back with a better plan that would give us a chance to do more research and to uh, I know that Renee's worked really hard on this, Deanne's worked really hard on it, Robyn's worked hard on it, and that's not to negate what they've done, it's just to say, we need more time, we need more information, and let's not have a knee jerk reaction um, to uh, a fear of liability and issues that haven't arisen yet um, and may never arise, um, that we are acting out of fear rather than out of um, information base. So I would just uh, ask you to consider a no vote on this tonight.
Other comments from members of the governing body? Dr. Rennie.
Mr. Mayor, I have some questions, and I guess it goes back to Renee's um, email of
Wait, ask your question, sir.
January 4th, and um, some of, some of this, I mean, obviously, I I've read the articles from Douglas County and in Casper. I have talked to the um, have communicated with the city manager in Casper. And so my first question is, is, is there any way that we can't unload more of the work or more of the paperwork onto the applicants so that we don't have to deal with as much, because that seems to be one of the, one of the problems, is just how taxing it is to our staff. So that's my first question.
Renee, can we delegate some of this paperwork?
Mr. Mayor, no. No.
Simple as that, all right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next question, sir.
Thank you. No, go on.
I like succinct answers.
Yeah, no, makes the meeting a little briefer. Second question is, is there any, I've been, like, the next paragraph had talked about the risks we have if, where we've had to make some small repayments to HUD. Because, so, and there's no way we, we can improve the oversight to minimize those risks?
Renee?
No, straight no again.
Honestly, Mr. Mayor, through you, um, I, I am perfectly um, willing to go to bat and argue for why we did what we did and why we do what we do. What the challenge is, with the turnover that HUD has, and the timing when we do things, there's a two-year lag time. So when we approve something, we try to get, you know, some confirmation from HUD, is this eligible, is it not? Depending on what the training is, the training will say yes, our HUD person in Denver says no, or use your best judgment, so we do. And then we submit it. I mean, you all approved the caper, you all approved the action plans. We submit it, and it comes back, and they, for whatever line item they, they choose, it's not eligible. And that's not until, like I said, two years after the fact. So it's just, that's the risk. We're, we're doing the best that we can, and yes, going forward, I would argue to the death, but there's some things that um, just aren't eligible. And because the rules are changing, they may have been eligible when we approved it, they're just not now.
So, Mr. Mayor, it's kind of like the IRS, they don't stand by their own advice.
I believe that's what I just heard, sir.
That's what I thought I heard too. All right, my last question. Um, and I, and I might need a little more of an explanation on this. We've been um, I guess we're, we're required to spend 80% of our, the funds given to us, is that correct? And if we do not, we have to come up with a remediation plan? So, can our director explain, how does the remediation plan work? Is it, do we have to come back and tell how we're gonna expend the rest of the money, or? That part doesn't make sense to me, so.
Ms. Smith.
So, and I, I probably can't do justice to this. So what happens is, we have a timeline. So by May of this year, we have to spend um, we have 70, $96,400 that we had, was our balance as of December 31st, that had to be completely spent by, um, actually, we had 156,000 that had to be spent by May. So the way it works, it's all formula based, and we get, I know you get emails, I get emails, Deanne gets letters saying, you're this many days out from May 1st, you're, you're, so it's, we're red flagged in our accounting system with HUD, saying, you're, you're really pushing being able to spend this money. So that's our, our biggest goal, and and Deanne works really hard to go to the nonprofits and say, okay, who's spending their money? How are you spending it? Can we meet this deadline? Um, and in cases that we can't, there are certain cases, it, it, we have to return it.
Okay, and Mayor, that's what I was gonna ask, if, if, I mean, if we cannot, we just send the money back, correct? Correct? Because I didn't know if there are other penalties involved, if we, obviously, somewhere in your, in your note, your letter, you stated that we weren't receiving enough requests to match the amounts awarded. So I didn't know if, if that got us in hot water, if we could just not request as much in the future. Um, and secondly, we also discussed why doesn't the city then, why aren't we submitting projects to even for economic development or neighborhood improvement, so that we are using those funds?
Renee, can you talk about the limits of where we can spend money?
Sure. So last year, we did submit a project for Pioneer Park, and two years ago, um, CRE submitted one for Optimist Park, so we're really focusing on parks because we know that's an eligible expense. The Optimist Park was only partially funded, Jason didn't have room in his budget to um,
For the match?
To match it, so we relinquished our whole amount. Um, and that money then gets reclaimed and goes into the next pot for the next year. So this may sound a little harsh, um, but it's the truth. When we're talking about the applications that came in this year, we don't have enough applications for the money that we have. Some of the applications that we got may not even be eligible, which increases the dollars even more. We still have 2020 COVID money that is not gonna be spent. So now the board is gonna have to do, do we open up another cycle? Do we allow the city to use those funds? It, it's challenging. We have many years worth of funds that we still have to spend. The way HUD works is you don't spend down your, 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 your pots. It all gets put into the same pot, but we still have to account for it. Our, our auditors, um, they were trying to pull strings this year, because this was one of the audited uh, funds, trying to figure out which pot of money paid for what project. And it's, it's a challenge, and that's why we did have to relinquish a little bit of 2016 funds because we just, we can't spend it. So I get what everybody's saying, when our nonprofits come up and talk about affordable housing, we're not using it for affordable housing, to be frank. Habitat for Humanity is using it. They struggle to find places to purchase. They find a plot. It's a great place. It has to have an environmental. They have to go in, like, it's six months before they can put an offer on this piece of property. They worked so darn hard, and they just closed on one, but it took two years. So we're rolling over their money every year. They do manage the uh, home rehab, which has been extremely helpful for this community. So yes, I do, we do have to find other ways to fund some of these projects. How can we do it? But is CDBG the right way to do it? So that's my struggle. Um, I, I get that there is a nonprofit need, but we're not using CDPG money for a lot of those needs, anyway.
And Renee, can you talk about the, the restrictions in the areas we can spend the money? Because I think that's also a part that I didn't understand until just recently.
So some of the conversations were, could we use it for East Park? East Park's in the county. We cannot, it, it can only be city. And and I meant, I sent you all a map, which I didn't bring today, so I apologize, I'd hold it, but you know, it has to be low income, low mod income um, areas, which there are some in every single ward. However, like Lyons Park is in a low income area, however, it's a, well, is that the low mod? Well, Jennifer might have.
Jennifer's coming to get it.
Um, but, so Lyons Park is low mod, but because everybody in the city uses it, 51% of the city of Cheyenne has to be low mod, and we're not. So that's what limits, when we start looking at that map and saying, trying to problem solve, and where can we do some of these projects, we're looking at parks in low income neighborhoods. Yes, we probably could kick the can for a few more years and keep taking care of our parks. And and with our nonprofits, the same situation is with, with their projects. A lot of it depends on the environmentals. Is it in an area that we can't touch because it's considered hazardous, and I'm kind of like down at the hitching post. There are certain areas we cannot touch with, with this money. So it is very challenging. We're very limited in where it can be spent and how it can be spent. Does that answer your question?
And you want to talk about like the environmentals, like noise, trains, things like that that also limit us?
And that was referred to in her letter.
And if you have questions on it. So the way it is, it's a, it, that also is a formula. So if, uh, and it's done online, so it's, it's not based on an actual noise meter, which boggles me. But HUD has a, a formula where how close are you to the railroad, how, how many trucks pass by you on a, on an hourly basis? And all of that goes into a formula. Kamea will always be in a noise area, Safe House will always be in a noise area. We put a, a noise proof fence in for Safe House this last year. We weren't sure if it was gonna be eligible. We did it anyway because we just feel really strongly that we have to do this, like we're trying. We'll find out next year if, you know, it should, but it's gonna prohibit them from anything further unless it's something inside, because they're still in a noise area. Kamea is trying to expand their women's dorm. They're going to have to, when they, the money that they've asked for is not gonna be enough to do what they need to do, because they're gonna have to do the double pane windows, the doors, the walls. It's challenging also because if you're increasing the number of bodies in that room, that may then make that project ineligible. It, it's, it's really, it's a formula, depending on how we choose to answer it. That's why we feel, that's the risk we're taking by trying to guess. Is this answering it adequately? Are we telling the story we need to tell? We just don't know.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Anyone else? Dr. Aldridge.
I'm Mayor Collins. Uh, I actually wanted to just address the fact um, that there was mention made about a, a park a a park, a park project not being able to be completed because of a match. I have to tell you, that was not a HUD requirement. That was a CDBG group vote that that we felt like it would be easier for the park to find a match from community members than it would be for other projects. A lot of the regulations that we're imposing on our nonprofits are not necessarily HUD ordered. They are created by the existing framework that we worked under through on the CDBG council. A lot of the things that have been done have been done because of tradition, because of history. I think that this program could be revamped and tweaked. So that, and I think we would have nonprofits applying for those funds. The only limitation that comes with how much money we can give to Habitat for Humanity is based on what CDBG council says, we only want to allot this amount of money to that project. So rather than giving Habitat two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to go out and buy a property, we said here's ninety-eight thousand. Well, anybody who's been on the Cheyenne real estate market recognizes, we can't find a house for ninety-eight thousand dollars to rehab. So I I'm frustrated that that I I've never known in my, and I have somebody who works with grants all the time, we notify our grant recipients when their money is starting to run out. We work with our grant recipients. We have things that we get in writing from our federal partners. I think that maybe the the changes that could be made to this program and the ideas that could be, it could be generated with some, a fresh set of eyes and some changes and maybe a fresh perspective on the CDBG council of how those monies can be spent and what amounts could be spent. I'm looking at Wendy Soto, the chairman of that committee, who's shaking her head yes, could really change this program and make it effective and usable for Cheyenne. But in its current situation right now, without some tweaking, it's not going to be beneficial. And what I'm asking this council to do is to vote no for this, give us a chance to revamp this and come back. If you want to look at it again later, if we can't do it within a year, then shut us down, but give us a chance.
Mr. Mayor, can I just add one thing to that? The the issue with, we have to submit a five-year plan. We are tied to how we spend our money for five years. We're in the middle, we're in our fourth year of this five-year plan. We can't tweak. That's that's the issue. We are literally tied for five years to whatever the board decides are the priorities. That's where we we spend our money. So we will not have another opportunity to tweak for another year. That's how HUD works.
Mayor Collins, through you, I would have to say that Renee, I I respectfully disagree. If we contact our federal partners and we propose a change, what we've been told is that we can propose changes, but we have to follow a process. And yes, we may be at the end of our five-year granting period, but it's a matter of working with our federal partners. I think we're I think we have that opportunity, so.
Any other comments from members of the governing body? Mr. White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. And thank you to Renee for all the, oh, no, I I don't have a question for you, Renee. But I was, I'm just think, I'm just gonna thank you and Robin for all the hard work that you've done regarding this. I think I I I was in communication with the city manager, Casper, to Mr. Napier, and they did reject the CDBG program. And Casper, his quote was that they haven't regretted doing it for a day. Just because of all of the restrictions and guidelines. Working with HUD has just become a pain. I served with Mr. Gannison on the CDBG Advisory Council back in the, back in the aughts, so. And I remember, boy, back then, we would get presentations from so many nonprofits and it, and we didn't have enough money. We didn't have enough money in those times to meet the the needs that were out there. We never experienced these types of problems back then. It just seems to me that the HUD regulations have become so onerous that it's almost, it's almost become counterintuitive and or counterproductive, I should say. And I say almost because I I really struggle with this, having, as I said, served with with Mr. Gannison back then and and seeing the good that the CDBG funds did back then, how, what it's done throughout all of these years, I really would hate to hunt this when we haven't had a chance to maybe, as my colleague from Ward Three said, revamp the program. We're tied to it for five years, right? We're in year four. Let's keep it. Let's use the time remaining for the current five-year plan to see what changes we can make with council members, with current members of the advisory council, with our incredible grant writer and and treasurer, and start seeing what we could possibly do for the next five-year strategic plan so that we don't have these these problems and heartaches to deal with. That would be my proposal. And so because of that, I'm going to be a no as well.
Comments? Mr. Seigre.
Over here, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Through you. I was a yes vote, and I tried to simplify it, but I do have one question for Ms. Smith.
Just ask your questions.
It was in, let's go with year twenty twenty twenty-two. How many dollars did the city get for grants?
Federal grants?
Are you talking just the CDBG or?
No, all federal grants.
Okay.
I I
Eleven, eleven.
Mr. Mayor's probably, yeah, it's probably eleven to thirteen million. And I think that ARPA money, yeah. If it if it counts, we have one hundred and fifty active grants that we manage.
So the the way I simplified it, Mr. Mayor, was if we had a pie chart and we were gonna Renee's time that she spends on thousand-dollar grants like CBDG and look at the amount of time she spends on million-dollar grants, where is the bang for the buck that the city's getting? We're having a grant writer, and I think we all know, because the amazing job that she has done since we hired her, and the amount of money that the city has gotten is amazing. So I know it's a difficult vote, but that's kind of how I simplify by voting for this. And you in our position, we have to trust when staff tells us something like that. And, you know, we're not elected just to make the easy votes. We already made a couple of hard ones today. And every day, so you know, that was my process through it, why I supported this resolution and like my colleague to the left of me said, when he talked Casper, they didn't regret it for an hour. And I know that there's going to be ways that council can work with our nonprofits to help bridge their gaps going forward. I guess the only other question I had was just because we vote yes on this doesn't mean we discontinue the current five-year cycle. Is that that correct? We'll still continue through this. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody? Okay, Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, I just want to make sure I understand what we're voting on. My understanding is if we pass this resolution tonight, it is a resolution to end our commitment to CDBG and to at the end of this next year, and that we would be making the necessary steps, taking the necessary steps to close down those programs. Is that correct?
Dr. Aldridge, to my knowledge, we're gonna do the grant cycle for this current cycle, and we would not continue to do the grant cycle after that, if in fact this ordinance or this resolution were to pass. All right, guys, ready to vote? Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this discussion, I've noticed that there hasn't been a single member of the public that came and wanted us to do this. The public that has people who are in pretty, pretty tough situations. And I think that that's indicative of something that we should consider. I think that the experience that the councilwoman from Ward Three has should be persuasive. I think that certainly no funding source has been identified. And in my experience over the last ten years, we've counted on this. What means or mechanism could we possibly have to have these very worthy community groups that truly do work very hard on our behalf? What funding mechanism are we going to find? Are we going to create one? Are we going to find some way to to do this? I haven't heard that either. I think that's really important here because obviously, the state program is not really comparable. Certainly, it would do some. But I think we have to kind of put ourselves in the situation of two classes of people. The people that work hard every day on the issues of the marginalized part of our community. I think a suggestion that's been made tonight, we look at this program, review how it works, and before the end of the five-year cycle, find some reasonable comparison to allow us to make a judgment about this that would allow us to attempt to meet that. And there's a second group of people here that don't come see us. But they're here in Cheyenne. And if you go over to Needs Incorporated, you'll see them. And there has been incredible stress on those service agencies over the past few years. With all the stresses that we've had in the city, certainly, but we're talking about in people's lives. So I'm suggesting that when we do have that opportunity, as has been noted here, look at this program over the next reasonable period of time. And I certainly am well aware of those areas of town that need help and that have got help over the years from CDBG. So I truly believe that the citizens of our city aren't coming here and asking us to do this. And I understand complexities of the matter. I don't understand them as well as my colleague Ward Three, my fellow colleagues from Ward One. But I understand those human needs. I understand the people that work darn hard, meet those needs. So I think we should vote this down and proceed with a program to review the matter. I'd certainly like to know more about it. I see what other communities have done that turned it down, but I'm thinking of what I've seen over the years here. And, you know, I don't doubt that it's difficult. But just because it's difficult is not a really good reason to turn this down because I'm wondering in next year, the year after that, what means do we, do these service agencies have to come to us with a budget, a budget that we've approved to do this? And certainly, I believe personally, we are looking at, excuse me, a very difficult time coming up in this country. And certainly, there's a lot of good things happening, but there's a lot of uncertainty. So I I really think that we ought to take advantage of this period of time and review this matter more thoroughly so that we don't have the situation of a year from now, or two years from now, or three years from now, those agencies possibly going out of business? Those agencies possibly struggling so hard. And one last thought, and I think that's been expressed here. When the city grants that CDBG designation and that Human Service Agency uses it, that is the city's sign of approval of their program for them to seek resources from other places and other individuals. And I think you can't overlook that. So I'm definitely a no vote on this with the hope that we can review the matter and come to a conclusion that is going to be more reasonable than what I see here. Thank you.
All right. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Renee.
I'm sorry to belabor this, but I mean, I sat here and listened to both sides. This is one I've been really conflicted on because I agree with both sides and think, think I can, you know, try and see the issue. I do definitely see the need. The question I have for my colleagues is, you know, it's it's appealing to say, we've got a year to go on the program, let's finish out the year and then see if we can revamp it or change it. But, you know, perhaps this should have been one of our council goals in that if we if we give them a year, what's our role in this? I mean, what do we expect in a year's time? And all we're saying is, I mean, it's just kind of like the last two weeks, we postponed it, but we're asking the same questions, we're having the same discussion we had two weeks ago. So, I mean, the question my colleagues is, you know, I can support going along and giving it giving it another another year, but what do we expect? And we just can't say, well, we gave them another year and and Renee, come back with with what do you think the changes are? I mean, how are we going to get involved? How are we going to handle this? And what do we want from the staff in that during that time? And I've not heard that.
Dr. Aldridge.
Mayor Collins, in response to my colleague from Ward Two, if I believe that if we have a year to take a look at this and to do some more research, I think there are several things that can happen. One, we need to contact our HUD partners. We need to find out and make sure that our staff has the most up-to-date training and that they are able to visit with successful programs, see what's being done in other communities where it is working, not necessarily the Douglas County stories, but to see communities where CDBG funds are being best utilized, what best practices across the country, to be able to work with our community partners and our nonprofits to look for those projects that are fundable, to work with our Parks and Rec folks and with Renee Smith and Robin to make sure that we have things in place that will really minimize the workload for our staff while maximizing the efficiency and of this grant. I think that there are a lot of efficiencies that could be found. I believe that at some point, we would be working with a new director because the existing director is wanting to retire. And I I just think that we have a lot of opportunities to really lean in and revamp this. And I think that there's a commitment on the part of everybody on the CDBG board and the nonprofits that have been in communication that they're willing to put in the extra hard work if we'll just give them a chance of one year.
Mr. Tuskabell. Through you, just to be clear, I believe I heard that even a yes vote on the resolution will still have another year.
Mr. Tuskabell, I believe that's right. We're we're in the process right now of getting the money and going through the process of meeting with all of our nonprofits in order to be able to give out the money. And the money won't go to them until this fall, right?
And then my follow-up comment from my
Well, hang on a second, Brenda, you're shaking your head no. We are, we are, we are in in another grant cycle and those dollars, we we we're going to accept the dollars that are coming for this next fiscal year, and we are going to give those dollars out, right? Okay. Right.
So if if this continues and you want to extend another year, we have to start the next action plan next year. So it's a cart and a horse, a chicken and an egg. Like, when when do we work the work to, are we going to do this or not? There is going to be a finite time to make this decision. By a yes vote, it it extends, so the program will still go until probably fall of twenty twenty-four. We just will not accept We just will not accept the that uh entitlement money that year for that program year.
Then my only follow up comment to my colleague from Ward one, I agree with everything he said wholeheartedly. I was voting with my heart, I would be a no as well. Like I explained earlier, you had the pie chart in front of you. How much time do we want our grant writers spending on thousand dollar grants? Or do we want them to use that time or efficiently be spent on million dollar grants? If it's my, it was my budget, I know where I would spend the time, so that's. Uh, the question coming to the governing body right now. If you delay a year, it's not a one year delay, it's it's going to be going into that next five year cycle.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Roywell. Did you have a comment, sir?
I did, I just had a question. We uh vote this in tonight. We vote this goes yes tonight. When do we send a letter to HUD? Or to. Remember we're sending a letter.
It would be HUD and it would be basically if this was approved, once it's signed, a letters then drafted um. And and sent to them at at our discretion, so um. It can go next week, it can, you know, it it's it's at our discretion of when to send it.
Thank you.
Mr. Laborn.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. I uh saw a conversation here with a member of the audience. Uh, that evidently had something to say and that was um. Accepted that back and forth between yourself and that member of the audience, I couldn't hear that. Would it be possible for us to hear uh from the microphone what that individual had to say?
Her her comments, sir, well, go ahead, Brenda, do you want to come up and just briefly uh repeat what she said?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, members of council, I'm sorry to belabor the the discussion. I just simply pointed out for clarification that we would have a year of operation. Um, under that contract while we would wind down the funds, but a decision tonight to reject those funds wouldn't give us any additional additional year. We would simply be operating under the funds that we have to expend, as I understand it.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right, last call for comments. Dr. Aldridge.
Sorry, Mayor Collins. Um, I just wanted to point out that while we may be able to let HUD know at any point that we're not. Planning to seek the funds if this were to pass tonight. Or what that does to our nonprofits is basically it gives them. They're basically put on notice that they need to start looking for funds to replace those funds. And they need to be uh downsizing or looking at how they're going to restructure their surfaces. To accommodate their their loss of funds. So while it may be convenient for us to have that. Um, and to be able to do that at our leisure, once they're given the signal that that's our intention. Then it it really begins the time clock for them to start looking for other funds and to downsize or to adjust their. Um, structure to accommodate that loss of funds. So I would encourage you to consider that it's not always just about us.
Comments? We had a good robust discussion, anybody else? All right. Motion before us is decline to decline the Community Development Barock Block Grant Entitlement Funds moving forward. All those in favor. All those in favor of the uh motion, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
No.
Miss you the hands of the nose? Mr. White, Mr. Cook, Dr. Aldridge. Dr. Rennie, Mr. Royble and Mr. Laborn are all knows, the motion fails, we will not give up our Community Development Grand Black. Next item, please.
Excuse me, number twenty eight. Um, memorandum of understanding between the City of Cheyenne, Cheyenne Police Department, the City of Cheyenne. Or City of Laramie, Laramie Police Department for Law Enforcement Extraterritorial Assistance.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to our extraterri- Easy for me to say extraterritorial assistance, extraterrestrial, yeah, I'm getting punchy. No one in the audience? All right, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation the Finance Committee is to approve and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White.
Mr. Mayor, I move to amend by substitute dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White. As I understand the substitute, it really basically just makes sure that uh we're following um state statute in allowing the uh. The host persons to be able to bill back to the uh uh to the other agencies. And so um, any comments from that, from the members of the audience? All right, hearing that, how about on the substitute from the council? Dr. Aldridge.
Uh, Mayor Collins through you, I would just like to say thank you to uh Stephanie and her team that. Really dug into this and made sure that we have the best MOU possible in and that um we're going to be able to. Uh, participate fully in this um agreement, so thank you.
Anybody else on the substitute? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Substitute is approved and we're back on the main motion, comments from the governing body. Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? The uh memorandum of understanding is approved as amended.
Next item is number twenty two A consideration. Bid number S dash eight twenty three or an agreement between the City of Cheyenne and Chaney Landscaping Incorporated. For the Cheyenne Cemetery's Irrigation System Replacement Project.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak to irrigation tonight? Hearing none, Mr. Royble.
Mr. Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to approve in an amount not to exceed. Two million sixty eight thousand eight hundred dollars and I so move.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. White, comments from members of the governing body.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. White.
I'm I'm very happy that my colleague from Ward one, Mr. Laborn uh pulled this off consent. Just wanted to make a couple of comments uh on this, this is probably the least attractive issue that we'll talk about with regard to cemetery ir- irrigation. But it's important to note that this project was uh under the Proposition Six. Umbrella of the most recent six penny. And the fact that uh Jason and his crew did such a great job. Doing the design phase, uh getting this bid consideration completed. And under significantly under the uh the amount that was allotted on the uh six penny ballot. This uh this item passed with sixty percent of the vote uh in the election. And I'm just uh really impressed by the efforts of staff to uh get this completed in such a timely manner. We were on the radio this morning and and I believe that uh work uh should actually start on this project. Uh, this year, so um kudos to staff and uh. And it just shows the public that we are being uh very careful and responsible uh with. The six penny uh funds in the project approval, so thank you.
Mr. Laborn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I uh speak in favor of this uh rather large expenditure. Because both my parents and my grandparents are uh in colon rest. At the cemetery as well as my wife's. And when we have uh perpetual care, that's a perpetual responsibility that um pretty serious. So I agree that uh certainly uh. Mr. Sanchez and his uh crew very thoroughly reviewed this and got a great bid. But I also want to point out that um this is not going to be completely uh bluegrass as it was in the past. And then Mr. Sanchez and his workers have reviewed and are attempting to find ways to. Insert uh other low lower water grasses um in that uh in that cemetery. I also want to really express my concern about how we're going to deal with the trees. I live near the cemetery and uh the spruce trees that really were the heart of. Entire cemetery landscaping uh have proved to be very problematic due to disease. Their uh low level uh root systems, they blow over. But we really need to pay attention when we get this new system. Now, we uh work with the city forester to find ways to. Replace those trees. So I think this is responsible in a number of ways, and I certainly uh. Believe we should support it and uh look forward to maintaining our perpetual care. Just as the voters approved and as the plot owners expect. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments? All right. Hearing that all those in favor of the consideration of bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? The bid is approved, Mr. Sanchez, it's time to go to work.
Next, next item is twenty three A, Appointment of Robert Girash. As Administrative Hearing Officer and Legal Counselor for the Governing Body for Services Related to a Contested Case Hearing.
So for the members of the audience, we have a uh Tony Company Appeal headed our way and we need to assign a hearing officer for that. So that's the purpose of this, and with that, I would entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Girash to be that hearing officer. Mr. Seagrave and Mr. White. All those in favor of Mr. Josh being our hearing officer for this contested case, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Mr. Drosh is appointed as our Administrative Hearing Officer.
Twenty three B, Appointment of Robin Boconera to the Housing and Community Development Advisory Council.
We have an opening and we now still have a C D B G, so we better get somebody there to fill it. Uh, I would entertain a motion for Robbins. Mr. Royble and uh Dr. Aldridge. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Miss Broken Arca is approved. Vouchers, anybody here to seek talk about vouchers? Trying to save your voice there. How about from the governing body? All right, next item, revenue report, anybody in the audience want to speak to revenues? How about from the governing body? We want more of them, that's right. All right, next item, please.
Um, let's see, twenty three E, Announcement of a Calcutta Benefiting Make-A-Wish Wyoming will be held February third to February fourth, twenty twenty three. At Red Lion Hotel and Conference Center, two oh four West Ex Farm Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming, ten percent of proceeds go to. The charity, twenty three F, Announcement of a Public Hearing to be held February thirteenth, twenty twenty three at six P M in City Council Chambers, twenty one oh one O'Neil Avenue, Cheyenne, Wyoming. And via electronic conference meeting or a transfer of ownership of retail liquor license application filed with the City Clerk's Office. For Wyoming Horse Racing LLC doing businesses Horse Palace, sixty four twenty one Spear Road, Cheyenne, Wyoming, license currently held by Port Richards, doing businesses Port Richards, other business.
All right, is there anyone in the audience like to speak under other business? Jennifer, nobody on the online? All right, how about from the governing body? Yes, ma'am. I know you're going to say something, go right ahead.
I was just going to say, I wanted to uh just thank um our police force, our police chief and uh Captain James and. Um, his colleague that came with him on Saturday morning to our council and coffee, we had uh twenty uh community members turn out to talk about different issues. I don't think we had more than two that were there to talk about any one issue, it was a a robust discussion. I think we were close to probably taking up the lobby area of Das Bog. And um really appreciated the um police chief sending uh those um that representation and. Being able to answer questions from the community, so thank you so much for your efforts to represent the Cheyenne PD and the City of Cheyenne.
All right, anyone else under other business? All right, just so the the governing body knows, I am asking for an executive session. We have two items that uh I would like to talk to the governing body about. The first is some management labor uh discussions with our fire union. And the second would be for a property or maybe two pieces of property acquisition. Uh, and so I would love to have an uh motion to move into executive session.
Mr. Oh, excuse. And Mr. Mayor pursuant to Wyoming State Statute, section sixteen four, four oh five A slash seven and sixteen four, four oh five A slash X or ten. I move the governing body meet in executive session to consider or receive any information classified as confidential by law.
Your second?
Second.
That was Mr. Escabel. Thank you very much, we have a motion to go into executive session by President uh Johnson, seconded by Mr. Escabel. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, we are going to go into executive session at this time. Um, so Jennifer, if you would turn off the uh the. What do you call it, the electronic stuff, so it's uh not going out anymore, we would appreciate that. And uh I'd ask Mr. McDonald to to start off um and uh.
Yeah.